Uh.
Uh.
We have, um, you guys on mic. We have, um, you guys on mic.
And we don't want to make it.
Um, you guys.
Uh, Tim and Reed, can you hear us and unmute and say something?
I can hear you now, but before that it was all jarbled.
I fixed that.
I, I can hear you now, yes.
Yeah, I can hear, but I just, I still can't see, see the.
New, how do we get them to be louder though? Is it really coming through there? Cause it sounded like it was coming through here.
You're talking.
Could you guys continue to talk?
Yeah, is so is the in, in, is the, the conference room or the boardroom tech just not working?
Yeah, it's not working right now. But we're getting close, so we're gonna skip the tour, I think, and if we can get this, if we can get this fixed, I think we'll be lawful. Now could you talk again?
Tim, why don't you say something?
Okay, how about you two?
Yeah, I think, uh, maybe we can put the, the tour on for next week. I'm not too sure how loaded our, um, agenda will be for, for next week, but maybe it's something that we can do and, can, how, how is my sound? Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. So I think what we'll do, Tim, um, is we'll have you open the meeting, we'll log the time that it's open, and, uh, you have to, yeah. We're live now, okay. So if we just open the meeting and, uh, call it to order and then just you can amend the agenda and just, you know, communicate that we're going to push the tour off to next week. Um, and let folks know that we have two commissioners attending by remote. Um, your reasons or for health reasons and that we, uh, have to have roll call vote today in order to, to be lawful, so.
All right, well, um. I'd like to call the, about County County meeting to order at three twenty-eight and, we will skip the introduction of employees and, uh, reschedule the tour of the county services remodel areas and for, um, health reasons, Commissioner Olson and myself are attending our meeting, uh, via Zoom. And, uh, so with that, I'd like to move on to item, five, the battered women's shelter update.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is, uh, County Administrator Tom Berry. We, because of the schedule change and the technology challenges we've had, uh, we're now ahead of schedule on that item, and so our speakers are not here at the moment. I might suggest however that you consider item six next for discussion, uh, on the bike and pedestrian trail along Division Street, because we do have that presenter here at this time.
Okay, uh, we will, um, continue on and come back to item five, but we will continue on to item six, that discussed that bike pedestrian trail along Division Street. The Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am here to discuss a topic that, uh, I've been in front of you a few times now. Uh, this is the bike and pedestrian trail along Division Street. Uh, this would be for the section from Jefferson out to the high school. I'm here because there's a new opportunity for this project. Uh, there is a state grant, uh, active transportation grant, that would help fund one hundred percent of the construction costs. Uh, it would be zero match for this, if we were to get this grant. In the past, I've talked about, uh, federal grants, and those have a twenty percent match, and so this would be a definite change from that where there's no match required for the state grant. Uh, there is a five hundred thousand dollar maximum grant award. Um, and then with all these grants, the design, construction inspection is not covered, so there would be a cost to the county. Uh, this is along a state aid route, so our state aid construction dollars could help fund those design and inspection costs. Um, I believe this is a excellent opportunity for this, uh, much needed project. Uh, again, the, uh, hundred percent construction funds is a big, big positive for it. Um, that is a big change from past discussions. Um, other concerns that have been raised in past discussions with the board is, is with that twenty percent match, but also with, uh, having school and city support. Um, I'd like to point out, the city is constructing the first leg of this trail from roughly the post office out to Jefferson. Uh, they have a federal grant for that leg, and so that is definitely showing city support for the project. The school also, uh, they've been very active in our, uh, grant applications. We did an engineering study a few years ago and the city admin was, sorry, the school admin was very involved with that, and they also were, uh, potentially, uh, gonna look at applying for the same grant that we're talking about here right now. Um, but in the end, they were deemed ineligible, but they were, they're definitely supportive of the project out to the school and out to the Gene Dillon even further. And so there's some support with the city and school. Um, then there's always been the question of need. Uh, is there a need for this trail? Is there public support? And this time, I'm just standing up here by myself. Uh, there are people that came in support of the project today, and also I know some commissioners received the emails, uh, from people out there that could not make it to the meeting, and I guess, um, depending on how much time there is, I believe there are a few people that would like to voice some support for the project if the board is willing to listen to them, but I guess in my summary, uh, this would be a great project. It would help add to the, the off-road pedestrian bicycle opportunity, uh, for people, and it's a busy corridor out there, and so if we get those people off the road, um, not just for the high school and Gene Dillon elementary kids, but if people using that corridor, get them off the street. And there are other people also that use the high school facilities, tennis courts and things like that, that would benefit from this, but I guess I would ask that the board support the plan, uh, or make an application for this grant. But.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Bruce. And you said this is, this would be at no cost to the county?
The construction cost would be covered one hundred percent. The cost to the county, we would have to cover engineering and construction costs.
Okay, and what about, what about, uh, future maintenance?
Yeah, I mean, definitely, we would have ownership of that trail, so there's future mate or ongoing maintenance with it.
Okay, Commissioner Goswicke?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. That was pretty much my guess, wondering if we had an estimate of what kind of actual cost we would have into, and you know, the, is there more than just your, your time engineering costs, or you know, do we actually have costs involved or?
Uh, again, it would be staff time for engineering, for design and inspection. We'd be doing that with our own staff. Uh, you know, uh, with a five hundred thousand dollar project, you know, you can, at a max, at a maximum, we are up to a twenty-five percent that can be spent on engineering, and with our projects, we are not getting to that, to that point. But even at a, say, twenty percent, you know, that's a hundred thousand dollar time, and that's, that's a complicated project for us, so, um, I really don't have a good estimate. If I had to guess, it's in that fifty thousand dollar range of, of employee time put towards it.
Not third party, not, not a third party, just a, um, as far as billable time, so to speak, to ourselves, essentially.
Correct, and it's, and it's using our state aid dollars or our state aid construction allotment can help cover the, the engineering on that. So it's not even, you know, charged out to local tax, taxes paying for it. It's our state aid allotment paying for it, for covering it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll just say, I, I supported it when we had the twenty percent matching grant, and so I very much support it now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I also support it from the standpoint that I, I received a couple of phone calls and the rationale, uh, definitely was that, uh, they felt it was a wise use of, of money and, uh, especially with the, the grant. And also the fact when I was up campaigning, I drove that road quite a bit, and there were bicyclists on the road between the high school and Gene Dillon. That would certainly be a lot safer on a trail.
All right.
Chair, is there opportunity for anybody in the public to comment? Is there enough time for that or?
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Wukich.
This, this whole, uh, initiative is very urban, uh, centric. It has been, uh, generated by MINDOT and, uh, the, the funding pool has been developed, and it has encouraged, for the lack of a better word, uh, engineers in rural areas to come up with safe paths, bike paths, all of that sort of thing. Um, I drive this road every day, and I, I find it very hard to believe that the amount of money that you're gonna put into this trail slash walking path is going to justify the number of people that will be walking from Bemidji out to the high school and on from there out to the, the Gene Dillon. It's, it's a stretch, it's a big stretch for me. Um, but of course, then it comes back to the discussion about if we don't use it, that pool of money is used by other urban areas. It, again, I'll repeat, in my opinion, it is an urban type of, uh, of, uh, development. I sat on the TAC, the Transportation Advisory Council now for many, many years as county commissioner. I've watched all of that, and it is my very strong opinion that what we're doing is we are weakening the funding streams for critical infrastructure that needs to be fixed in rural Minnesota. We need to fix bridges so people can get to work by car over a bridge. We need to fix roads so that people can get over roads from our rural areas into town. I'm not saying that bikes and walking paths are not healthy and not good. I'm just saying we have higher, we, we have higher priorities and we have higher needs. We, we all know the struggle that we, that we have as county commissioners with all of the roads that need repairing and eighty million dollars worth of needs and only able to, to, uh, fix five or six or seven million of those each year, so, uh, you know, I'm left at a point where I, I say I don't support it. That's a bad thing to have to say, but I really don't support this because of what I just said. We need to spend that money on bridges. We need to spend that money on major infrastructure that is more important than walking paths and bike trails.
Yeah, if I may, I totally agree. You know, there are priorities. We got all kinds of road priorities out there, but this is the situation we're in. Like you said, there are, there are specific pots of money out there, and it's coming from the feds, it's coming from the state level. There are specific pots of money for specific types of projects, and that's what I end up doing. So I look for those pots of money, and I got, you know, all right, here's a project that potentially could be funded with that. So that's what we are down to, is looking for those different funding streams out there, and this one happens to be for trails. And I think we have a, a project that fits, and so, uh, with a hundred percent construction costs and some engineering time, I think we have, uh, this would be a good opportunity to get a, a project done, but.
All right, well, you know, I, I think I always try to look for an opportunity to, you know, partner with, um, our counterparts at the city or, or other local, uh, agencies and things like that to make the best use of, of the money that's available. Um, but I'm, I'm kinda concerned on how this may affect, uh, you said that the funding would be coming from the Kasafwood, and could that potentially have packed on, on, uh, other Kasaf projects or, you know, and I remember a, a few years back, uh, Kelly was, uh, requesting some, some assistance in, in regards to a, uh, trail to school and, and somehow at that time there was no money, but now today we have some Kasaf money, so can, can you help me, um, get a better understanding of how that works?
So, this is a new grant opportunity on the past project or past projects, even this one, uh, they're looking at federal dollars. There is that twenty percent match. So Black Duck, Kellyer, all those other smaller, uh, towns have also looked at these grants. Um, but the hard part is always coming up with that twenty percent match. Again, what's different here now is this has a hundred percent, uh, construction funds. Um, and this project is along a county state aid route. The project in Kellyer and the projects that have been in Black Duck are not alongside of a county road. They are, you know, going across the city street or alongside of a city street, and so our county state aid dollars that are meant for county roads are not eligible to be used off of county roads. So that's the difference that, uh, like the city of Kellyer or this, the school in Kellyer had, is they were proposing something that was off of a county road.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? Uh, I, I just would like to say, this is just such a, a wonderful opportunity to put a, a, a bike trail that is twenty years late in being built. And we can't just look and say, well, because we aren't able to do everything that we want to do, we shouldn't do anything. To me, this is such a slam dunk. I, I just don't understand it. The money is there. We have a great project. We know people will use it. And we know that once it's established, that more people will use it. Um, it, it, this is, will increase pedestrian and bicycle safety. It'll help kids that live in town be able to bike out to Gene Dillon or to the high school. I mean, this is just such a good thing all the way around. If there are opportunities in other school districts, of course, we'll support them in the future. But I don't think that we should let the fact that there's lack of funding in some areas, whether it's for bridges, which is absolutely true, but here we have an opportunity to do something that is a good impact on the community, and, and let's please not pass it up.
Okay, well, um, from listening to discussion, it sounds like there's four, um, that are in favor and one that, uh, is opposed, and maybe we can put this on the, um, regular, uh, board meeting for, for roll call vote at the five o'clock meeting.
Mr. Chair, it's currently on item seven K on the consent agenda.
Okay, oh, well, I would rather have it be on the, the, uh, regular, just for the fact that, uh, um, there, there are some concerns and, uh, I don't want, want, uh, there to be, uh, uh, a four, four one vote, uh, for the consent, so if we can.
Mr. Chair, as a point of order, anyone can pull any item from the consent agenda to the regular agenda if they want to, and if that's not voiced by someone that's opposed to it, then let's just move forward and keep it on it, on the consent.
Mr. Chair?
That's my opinion.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that to the regular agenda, please.
We'll move it to, uh, item thirteen, uh, thirteen A or, or is it fourteen?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is the administrator. We have a fourteen, so you could call it, uh, thirteen point one, I suppose.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I don't wanna really mess up the order of the numbers, but, uh, whatever is, uh.
Thirteen point one is, is good, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner Anderson. All right, we will continue on. Um, uh, sorry, Bruce, but I, I think I heard you ask if there was time for public comment, and I, I'm not too sure if that's something that we've, uh, allowed in the past, and, and I do appreciate, uh, people showing up. Um, I wish I could see, um, but, uh, we will continue on to, um, we, we will backtrack to the battered women's, uh, shelter update. Have they arrived?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, they have arrived. Uh, Executive Director and the Campaign Committee Chair from the Northwoods Battered Women's Shelter are gonna present this afternoon. Uh, they have an update for, to the board in regards to their progress, uh, to date on the, uh, on the new shelter, and are excited to share those details with you here. We're gonna bring their presentation up here, so if you could bear with us just a moment. Uh, it may be difficult, however, um, Commissioner Olson and Commissioner Sumner for you to see the presentation, given some of the technology limitations we're having this afternoon, so we'll apologize in advance for that.
Well, Tom, I was gonna ask if, uh, Diane would be able to email us, uh, that presentation and, and we could try to pull it up, um, in the meantime.
You bet. So, uh, while they're speaking, I'll download their presentation and send it to you on my system, so we don't compromise the, the main system.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it seemed to me that earlier when you guys were troubleshooting that the, um, that when you shared the screen, that we were able to see the shared screen.
Okay, well, let's try that first, and, uh, if you can, then we won't have to go through the extra steps.
And we're, we're, we weren't gonna start with that right off of that anyway.
Okay. Just one moment, we're pulling the presentation up.
Darn, I was gonna invite all those roads and trail lovers to stand and watch this, cause the more people that are aware of this project, the better in the community. So I wanted to start by introducing myself. It's fun to be, I guess, fun to be on this side of the, um, podium and, and approaching the board that I used to work so closely with. I am, um, serving as the chair of a capital campaign to build a new battered women's shelter in Bemidji. Um, something that has been, um, on people's radar for far too long, and I think is going to come to fruition, and I'll let the other two women with me introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Chris Lotzky, the Executive Director at Northwoods Battered Women's Shelter.
And I'm Rebecca Stone. I am the Chairman of the Board for the Northwoods Battered Women's Shelter.
So I, I wanted to come before the board, and we went to the city council as well, because I think leaders in the community really love knowing the projects that are going on, whether it's, um, really a mission of the county or the city or not. This is a big issue to, to the battered women's shelter and for the community in the surrounding area. So I wanted to just kick off by saying that the battered women's shelter in Bemidji was established in nineteen seventy-eight, that many years ago, so it's been in existence for a long, long time. It's an organization that is on extremely solid ground for funding. The Department of Justice funds the battered women's shelter, so it's really wonderful to be part of a campaign that you don't have to worry about building it and then being concerned if you'd have to shut down in a year or five or, or seven. They've been on very solid ground for all of these forty years, so that's really exciting. What is, what is really, um, pretty sad, and we'll show you a video soon, is that the current shelter was purchased in nineteen seventy-nine. It was an old, um, a old residential structure, um, just north of the downtown area. It's got a basement and two stories, and just like all of those old homes were, um, it's really divided up and, and, um, split up and has steep stairwells and, and all of that kind of thing. So, and the facility is now over a hundred years old. So you can imagine how worn out it is. You know, they're turning over women and their children constantly as they come for a shelter, come to seek, um, relief from domestic violence, and I guess I should have led off by saying this shelter provides service to people that are victims of domestic violence. It is not a homeless shelter. It's a shelter for those that are, um, seeking that kind of service. So, um, Chris is here today, and I thought she could give you just a really quick summary of, of. really quick summary of, of some of the services that they, and I repeat, probably only some of the services they provide.
Thank you, Kay, and thank you everyone for having us. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about, um, last year we provided nine hundred and twenty-seven nights of safe shelter for victim survivors of intimate partner violence and their children. Um, we provide temporary crisis shelter for victims of domestic abuse and their children. We have a twenty-four hour advocacy service. So our advocates are on duty twenty-four seven with that crisis line. We have individual safety planning. We work really closely with the um, police officers here. Uh, we also have orders for protection. We do a ton of referrals such as housing, medical, emergency, other types of um assistance. Sometimes people just come there with the clothes on their back if they're coming and fleeing from a, a unsafe situation. Uh, we work with Safe at Home with um Secretary, Secretary of State. We do a lot of community awareness where we go out and provide education and things like that to the school system and other places. Rebecca, did you want us to be quick on anything or?
Hi, here's more support more than anything. Um, we provide more than just shelter. We, we provide opportunities and counseling uh for people to really get back on their feet. So um, the shelter is a huge part of what we do, but that's the, the foundation. So that we can make sure that there's a safe place to be so that you can move forward with your life. So I think that's an important piece that I think people get lost in that we're not just a shelter.
I think now maybe we'll show the first video of the current shelter and then the new one. Welcome to Northwoods Battered Women Shelter. As you can see, all of these stairs going in. We welcome you in. This is our entryway, common area. This is our common area of the living room dining room. This is what um, the families use as breakfast where they have meals, sometimes up to five children at a time. That was one family bedroom off of the dining area. We're going into the kitchen area. And again, this is another common area that the families use to cook, prep meals. Um, the big freezer and the stove. So we have up to twelve victim survivors uh in the shelter at a time that use this area to prep food, meals, things like that. And this is one of the two full bathrooms that we have here at the shelter. This is on the main level. So sometimes up to twelve victim survivors and five staff use those two bathrooms. This is a main office that our lead advocate and our community resource advocate use. You can see how crowded it is. Peeking into here, this is our donation area slash staff file area. We are just so overflowing in here. We get tons of donations which we love to have for victims and survivors, especially in the cold months. That's our legal piazza over here that we have for victim survivors, even community members to use for Zoom board or other things they need to print out. This is again, one of the common areas that would be an, an area where we have a phone for victim survivors to use, not very private at all. This is up on the third level of the home. We have three bedrooms and one other full bathroom up here. So as you can see, when they're, the victim survivors are coming through and maybe healing from trauma, that they would have to share a room with three other people, a very crowded space. The stays are typically up to sixty days. Sometimes we give extensions if they're getting close to housing. But this is, this is the area that they share. They're able to lock the doors and have some privacy there, but it's a very small area up there. Again, one of the other rooms that we have up there, not a lot of space. Sometimes we have folks that come with just, just the clothes on their back, but they do have room for a few belongings. These again are the stairs. So I just want to point out, imagine if you are um, a victim that just came out of the hospital from a stay and maybe you had um, an injury with your hips or legs and you couldn't do those stairs, how that would be for your healing. This is our area where we have our laundry room, two big full-size washers and dryers that our participants can use. Just a real small space in here that, and there's more freezer space back there for overflow food, but this is, this is what we have for the families to use. This is our food pantry that we get all of our food. We have victim survivors that maybe are in the community that we want to be successful where we can have them come in for food. This is our office that we share with the Executive Director, Assistant Director and Executive Assistant. All three of us right in this area where we work, our file room where we keep all of our files locked up back there and other like gift cards and things. This is our actual conference room and training space that we use for team meetings and bringing partner agencies in for meetings. And it's again, just as small as it looks. So this is the outside, the backside of the shelter. You can see again, all of the stairs, the fire escape. Little small area for, for victims and survivors to be out there with their children. The fences are kept locked and then everything is secure. We have cameras on the sidewalks and the parking and the back area there for everyone's safety and security that the advocates watch from inside. Thank you for joining us for a tour of Northwoods Battered Women Shelter. Have a wonderful day. Welcome to the reimagined Northwoods Battered Women's Shelter. Notice the modern architecture chosen to support this transformation, not only to the community, but to provide a sense of hope and something new to those accessing services. As we arrive to this side of the building, you will notice the resident rooms are designed to be efficiency-style apartments, which is vastly different than our current facility. This design will provide residents with a sense of autonomy, self-choice, privacy and separation in a safe environment with access to the outside from the individual spaces. The larger sized units are for individuals or families and the smaller spaces are intended for short-term. Multiple occupant use to meet the needs in emergencies, but also adaptable to meet the needs of those seeking safety. The backside of the building is living quarters, but the front of the facility is much more community-facing, allowing for easier access to services as the majority of services provided are community-based. This will ensure the privacy of those staying at the shelter. As you enter through the front doors, you first see a conference room that allows for greater community collaborations, improve donor relations and strengthen relationships with community partners. Next, we enter one of the multiple private meeting rooms. This will allow those seeking services the necessary privacy when meeting with an advocate. Our current facility does not allow for private meeting rooms. Now you will see the community gathering space that will be known as the Great Room. This room will have a great table for residents to complete projects, participate in support groups and gather while still having their own private individual space. This space will also include a coffee bar, cabinetry with groceries for participants to prepare meals they choose and snack items. We now begin to enter the residential units. Each unit has their own bathroom and kitchen to give a sense of dignity and privacy while processing through their trauma. These rooms are designed to accommodate both singles and families and can be adaptable to meet the needs of our community. Please join us as we work together to better meet the needs of those experiencing intimate partner violence in our community.
Thank you, Diane. So you know, when you watch those two videos, I think the most compelling story is told by the video of the current facility. I, I think in this community, we could do better. You know, this has served them for forty years. They'll continue to do the work with or without a new facility, but we just can do better. I think about someone who has faced the kind of trauma they must have to face before they come to this organization. Um, and it's probably not the first time they've faced that kind of trauma. And it just feels like when they walk in the door, we could have a better, we could do a better job of saying, you know, you're welcome here and we've invested in you. As a community, we've invested in you. So that's what's really the driver for me, um, is to look at that old facility. You know, I, I was telling Chris comparing to, to when I worked here for the county. I can't imagine working in a space about the size of the office I had and having Diane and Jody both in my office the entire time. No one could have a conversation with a funder or with um, a, a legal advocate or a, they can't have private conversations because there's no place for privacy. There's no programming area for group sessions, um, for counselors to come in. They, they just don't have the programming area. We've been talking a lot about you as a board have been talking a lot about programming um, for people in the jail and how that's the only way you get them to good health. The same thing, the same thing goes in the shelter. Programming is, is optimum to them doing their job. Um, so while the house, uh, really large number, how many was it last year? They served nine hundred twenty-seven last year, which is a huge number and it feels really great to be able to know the community could do that, but they turned five hundred twenty-eight people away. And so, and when I say turn away, they don't just turn them away. When Chris went through her litany of services, they do all they can to connect the people with, with um, services that will help them, but they can't take them in. That's a, that's a really large number for this community. Um, what the new facility will do for improved um, security. And as it mentioned a few times, you probably recognize the voice, the voiceover was Larissa Donovan. But she talked about dignity and um, that is something that I ca- uh, again, I can't imagine going to that shelter and having to room with another person that's just come out of the same kind of trauma, who also has two of their children with them. You know, that bunk room with four people, that's four people. Some of those might be little people who I wouldn't want to share. So the, we have launched a three point two million dollar campaign. Um, this has, like I said, been a long time coming. I was asked on this committee about a year ago by Phil Hodap, actually. We've got a really awesome committee. I'm going to only mention a few. We've got um, Janie Alaman from United Way is on there. Joy Johnson, retired from Sanford Health is on our committee. Um, Sue Kringen, who did fundraising for the majority of her career with BSU and United Way is on our committee. Um, we've got Shelley Girdey's on there. Uh, what our newest member is Christian Wally. It's really awesome to get a, a young person from a full generation and younger than I am, if not a little more than that, um, on the committee. So we, and that's like I say, just to name um, some of them. It's a, it's a really awesome committee. So we're working really hard. We, at the beginning of, of meetings do a mission moment. And I've asked people to come in, um, to talk about the trauma they've gone through. And it's pretty amazing when we start meeting with people that we want to ask if they are willing to contribute to the campaign. It's just amazing how many people have been impacted personally by domestic abuse, not whether it's them, themselves or a relative or a friend. Um, but the mission moments really keep us charged up about this hard work. It's really, really hard work raising that kind of money. Um, but I have some really good news too. So of the three point two million dollar campaign, we have raised one point three million dollars. Um, the Nielsen Foundation is right now deliberating on the presentation that we made at their invitation, um, a little over a month ago. So that's always good news when, when Nielsen is listening and is very interested in your project. Um, another bit of really good news is that um, the domestic battered women's shelter owns their own piece of property, has owned it for, is it like ten years? A long time. So you can tell this has been a dream for a really long time. Um, and the property is really very optimum. It's up on Thirty First Street. Um, a little bit west of Ridgeway Avenue and on the north side of the street. So it's in walking distance to retail, to grocery, to a playground, um, to Sanford Health. It's just really a wonderful piece of property. Um, and then the other bit of good news is that Women United, when they formed and had their first gathering, their first brunch, this was the project that they took on as their pet project that year. And so from the funds that they raised and with some contributions from Nielsen, I believe. I don't know if I'm missing anyone else contributed.
Uh, maybe Northwest Foundation. There was a few different funders.
Them and then, and then those um, private donations that came in. They have done that preliminary design stage, so they have a really strong feel for what it is they want to do. Um, and Rebecca is now putting together a committee, a building committee that can start fine tuning that model and um.
An updated number of the process because this was, these are originally built in, or made in twenty nineteen and obviously things have changed since then. So we are working on making sure that we've got a solid, solid goal and a, a solid idea. So it's, it, it's feeling real.
And what we're saying is that we'd like this bill to happen within the next year. That's the goal. But really the fundraising is the, the key to making this happen, as you well know. Um, if fundraising were easy, you'd have a jail right now, a new jail. So we have to raise funds a little bit differently than the county board does, but um, but that's going to be the, the linchpin for, for when they can break ground is how effective we are in raising the funds. But in any case, that's kind of the project that we've been working on. And I'm sorry, Reed and Tim, I'm not looking at you at all because you're on a screen over there. Um, but um, does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Our community's been needing this for a very long time. Um, when I started my own business in nineteen eighty-nine, shortly after that, I met um, and her name is slipping my uh, mind right now, Karen.
Karen Janov.
Yeah, Karen Janov. And we did numerous designs. I donated my services. Remember Kay, we tried to pull bacon in, uh, Beltrami Area Council of Nonprofits. We tried to combine a, a, a daycare facility, trying to get more funding sources, all of that. So without going into a big long, our community needs this, um, has for a very long time. Um, we know that there is a need for it and I believe that you'll get the right folks behind it and get the funding. And uh, I would just encourage uh, getting as much local involvement as you can, from design to the contractors, to supply houses, all of that sort of thing. You get those folks behind you, you'll find a lot of support. Um, I, I would support this a hundred percent because I did for many years. I, I helped Karen and did some code work for the existing building and knew there were deficiencies there. And we tried to find a funding source through Mendoc and through a whole bunch of different places. And we never were successful. So that's thirty years ago. So we know that the community has needed it for a very long time. Show that need, especially to Nielsen Foundations and those types of folks, that we have needed it for a long time. This is not a whim. This is not just a quick idea. It's something that's very much needed in our community and, and it's way overdue.
And I appreciate that, Commissioner Lukachek. You know, that's a great perspective and not, not very many people in the community have that kind of history and that kind of knowledge of how, um, how hard they've worked to make this happen, yet digging in the whole time and doing their jobs. So, um, yeah, it, I, I really in my heart believe it's going to happen. I, it's just really hard to know when we're going to be able to break ground. Three point two million doesn't sound like a ton of money, but you, oh, and I forgot to say on that one point three million, very little of that is grant dollars. The vast majority of that is individuals contributing ten thousand and twenty thousand and thirty thousand at a, at a time. But it takes a lot of thirty thousands to get to three point two million. So um, so we're going to dig deep um, after Nielsen. We, I might as well let the board know, um, we are, I have talked to Jim Pizzabella from um, Prime West and I think depending on their situation with their year-end fiscal, this is the kind of project. depending on their situation with their year-end fiscal, this is the kind of project that Prime West loves. We're serving the same people that Prime West serves. Jim received the phone call extremely well. Of course, it all depends on, on where they sit as well. But, but I'll be hopeful on that one. And we're just gonna, Chris found out about a Mardi Grant just last week of fifty thousand, so that was another yay. So we're gonna, we're gonna make this work. But, but again, I appreciate the moral support.
Are there any other questions? Um, I guess for the sake of time, you know, we're, we're always running against the, the clock. So, um, a few more, you know, a few more questions and, and, uh, if anybody has any.
Well, Mr. Chair, I guess I would ask what our role is as a county. I mean, how can we help, um, help them make this happen? Um, I, I was on chat about this morning and I mentioned the LATCF funds that we received this year and will receive next year. That's four hundred thousand, just shy of four hundred thousand dollars of, um, unrestricted dollars. Can we give them a little bit of that to help them? I mean, we're not, and we'll be one of those, you know, smaller donations. We're not going to be a million dollar donation or anything, but can we help them out with something? Fifty grand or a hundred grand?
Commissioner Olson, I'm glad you brought that up because I, I've, um, I've, I've watched the, the video before and, and, you know, and, and kind of read into, you know, our board package and the presentation and things like that. And I've, I've also wondered, you know, what is our role at the county? You know, because it just does, you know, have an impact on not only our community, but you know, our, our residents as well. You know, uh, three point two million dollar campaign and almost, you know, being to, uh, raising half that is, is pretty impressive. You know, and listening to, you know, the potential, uh, foundations that are interested, I, I would feel that at the county, we would have some, some, we should have some role in this. So, you know, this is, you know, you know, I guess, you know, to be completely honest, uh, you know, it, to, to see that building, it's still being occupied and in use. From when I was there as a kid, you know, thirty years ago is, is kind of, uh, you know, that, you know, brought back memories and, and things like that. But for, for them to still be occupying, you know, the same building, uh, we are providing the same services, I, I think, uh, it's something, you know, my colleague, Commissioner Lukachek, mentioned it, it's something that we need and it's, it's time, you know? They've been operating out of that for, for, you know, too long. Um, you know, and I think with the, uh, I know we're building, uh, you know, more services could be provided, more families could be, um, serviced. You know, hearing that, uh, there are nine hundred and twenty-seven, um, folks that, that stayed, you know, last year and, and more than half, uh, five hundred and twenty-eight, you know, um, you know, were provided some other type of service, you know, tells us that, that there is a need. So, you know, I guess I would, you know, entertain, you know, any type of motion that, that would, uh, direct, uh, our county administrator to, uh, look at, you know, way, look at a way that we can help, uh, make some sort of, uh, grant, uh, opportunity for, uh, the Northwoods, Better Women Shelter for their, for their, uh, for their campaign. So one thing, Kay, and, and, you know, the committee for, for bringing forward the presentation and, and I, I commend you for the work that you're doing and, and I wish you all the best, you know, in, in your efforts because it, uh, I see it, that's, uh, it's really needed.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Okay. I wish I could see you guys. I, I think I'd make the discussion a little bit, uh, move along a little bit faster. There are no other questions. We will, uh, continue on to the item seven, the lost application and resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we have before you for discussion this afternoon, the county's draft, uh, lost, which stands for the local option sales tax application and also a resolution. I wanted to spend a few minutes talking through, uh, some of this information. Uh, as you know, the board has elected to, uh, replace the current jail with a new two hundred and forty-two bed facility. Uh, the cost has been estimated so far at around, uh, eighty million dollars. Uh, this will require the county to come up with a new funding source in order to pay for, uh, such an endeavor. Uh, there has been preliminary conversations about what funding source might be the most appropriate or, uh, or best for the county to consider. Uh, we've had conversations in and around this topic and, uh, the board generally felt that a local option sales tax would be a good option for, uh, finding additional revenue to, to potentially build this facility. So a couple of things needs to happen in order for us to move forward a question that we would place on the ballot for our citizens, uh, as to whether or not they would like to, uh, you know, agree to the local option sales tax as a funding source. Uh, that is, we have to go to the state legislature for a preliminary approval. Uh, to do that, we have to submit an application, uh, before the end of January. And that application is, uh, there is certain pieces of information that are required inside the application. And that is what you'll see in the packet, uh, certainly a cover letter, uh, some project background information that describes the current state of affairs with the uh, current facility. We also have for, uh, the application requirements, uh, resolutions and, uh, uh, position statements of the board through meeting minutes, uh, that are also included. Additionally, uh, we have talked about the limitations of the current facilities, some of the uh, problems or challenges that have been identified through inspections and other analysis. Uh, and then we move into the description of the project, identifying, um, the importance of those, uh, improvements and how they will change the, uh, operation of the facility and also impact the, uh, community, uh, particularly from a functional programming space, uh, capacity standpoint, and as well as a classification and separation of inmates, which are also areas that we're struggling with in the current facility, uh, being sensitive to staffing, uh, and also equality of access, safety, uh, and care for inmates and staff. Functional, uh, and logistical types of movements through the facility are all sorts of things that are, uh, being addressed inside the, the application and its description. There's a conceptual site layout, which is extraordinarily conceptual at this point, uh, just to kind of give a sense of the size of the components of the facility, certainly by no means the, uh, the way it would actually look. Uh, particularly since we do not have a location identified, uh, as of yet, uh, in, as to where this facility might go. Then there is also a requirement in the application that we satisfy the regional significance, um, question in that, uh, that the legislature, uh, has required of us and anyone, you know, seeking a local option sales tax in the state of Minnesota. So there's information talking about, uh, the regional impact and significance of this project. Um, and, uh, that's, uh, included in the application, uh, as well of, uh, in addition to that, we have to show that there is regional support that we have, uh, in regards to the construction of this facility. And so there's a series of letters of recommendation and support by a number of other jurisdictions. Um, and I won't go through each of those, but that's also inside the packet as well. And then, um, uh, essentially we have a financial overview at a very high level of, you know, what the project will cost if we were to bond for it at, um, a certain rate, how long, uh, would that, uh, would that rate need to be collected? Uh, how much we would need to collect over that time period? And just in summary, the estimates that we have now suggest that an eighty million dollar bond issuance, uh, would essentially uh, require a thirty-year local option sales tax to be implemented, uh, at around a five eighths of a percent tax rate. And, uh, that, that would help us identify or develop about a hundred and seventy million dollars worth of funding to pay not only the principal, but also the interest and issuance fees and all of those sorts of things as well. Uh, the way this has been written is that, uh, and this is included in the resolution as well, that whenever we achieve the maximum allowable collection, which is being proposed as a hundred and seventy million dollars, or the period, the maximum term period of thirty years, the local option sales tax would, would cease. Uh, so whichever comes first, uh, would be, would be what, uh, would prevail in the administration of the local option sales tax. We also have included, uh, the community feedback survey results, uh, kind of, um, presented them in a summary way. Uh, and that helps identify, uh, regional support and significance. And as well, we've put in a summary of the uh, various community engagement, uh, meetings and conversations and, and, uh, presentations that we've had as well. All part of your packet includes a, a new resolution that would need to be included in the sales tax application, uh, which is essentially your authorization for staff to submit this, uh, application to the state legislature to be considered as, uh, part of their legislative process next year. So most of what I said at a high level is included in the resolution. And it is included in the packet in draft form. And of course, everything's draft at this point. The steering committee, the jail steering committee, has been given the same packet and is also going through a review period as well. So there may be some modifications or adjustments to what's in the packet or how it might be presented, or maybe some changes in wording or phrasing or, or some additions and, and subtractions and stuff. But I would say at this point in time, we're probably ninety percent there. And so what we would like to do is just to get this in front of you now, so you can have some discussion around it. Uh, it is also on the regular agenda for action. Um, and we can continue the conversation there. We won't have a ton of time in the regular session because we're time bound with the budget hearing that has to start at six o'clock as advertised. But anyways, that's what we have for you and I'll stop there and, uh, you can ask questions or talk amongst yourself.
All right. Thanks, Tom.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I see this. It's on the, the consent agenda, not on the regular agenda.
My, my apologies. Yeah, it is on the consent agenda. Uh, but if it does get pulled, then yeah.
Which I, I'm, I'm fine with. I, I mean, I think that this is the, the, the best way that we can pay, aside from getting bonds, you know, um, which I don't think is outside of the realm of possibility, but it's a harder, harder lift. But, um, this is one of the best ways to try to spread out the pain. And, um, you know, we know that just by virtue of being a, uh, having Bemidji as a regional hub, uh, people from outside the county will be coming in and spending dollars in our community. And so they will be contributing to that rather than purely going to, um, uh, county landowners that would be paying for it through property taxes. So this is my full support.
Mr. Chair, uh, if I could just make one other statement, I, I would add that, um, your authorization of this resolution and the submittal of the application to the state for consideration, uh, does not by itself create a local option sales tax. And I'm saying mostly for the public, right? Because I think we, we want to make sure that the public is aware that this is just a pre-step and that if the state legislature gives us the authorization, we will be required by law to place a question on a ballot of a general election where this question gets posed to our citizens and then they will be the ones that make that decision. So just want to make that really clear also that, uh, your, your agreement potentially tonight is not to essentially institute a local option to ask permission to ask the question of our citizens.
Mr. Chair, one thing that I would also like to add is I know that there's a, a neighboring community had a, um, referendum this past election for a local option sales tax to, for a municipality to help them fund, uh, the reconstruction or the construction of a new library building, I believe. And that, um, that referendum failed. And so there's still, they still have the costs, uh, you know, incurred and they'll still be paying it, but they'll be paying it through property taxes. So I think that along with this, and I think that we've been doing a fair job of trying to get community involvement on the jail, you know, you, um, the sheriff and the, and the administrator went on that whirlwind. Um, and I, and forgive me for those who also was with them, but of really trying to get the word out about the importance of, of, um, a new jail. Um, we'll have to do that again to really, um, encourage the, the community to get behind this because this is, I do think is the best, the best way that we can, that we can fund this and try and keep, um, uh, keep property taxes harmless as, as much as possible.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, uh, because I can't see. Again, this is, uh, on the, uh, consent agenda, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. Oh. Hearing no questions or comments. Uh, thanks, Tom, for that update and we will continue on to item eight, the twenty twenty-three legislative platform. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, as you all may know, the Minnesota legislative session will begin earlier this next year than it did, uh, the current year we're in. Uh, it'll begin on January third and so, um, we have developed a legislative platform as a staff and that is what's being presented tonight for your consideration. There's no action required by you this evening. Uh, we're just simply placing this in your hands this afternoon. Uh, and we do hope that we can have some conversation or answer and address concerns or issues you have about the platform. Uh, because we do, we do want to bring it back to you at the next meeting, which of course is in one week and ask for formal approval at that time, barring any changes or recommendations, adjustments you might have to it. So I wanted to quickly just walk through the platform with you. Uh, essentially, many of the things that we pushed for this past legislative year, we will continue to push for. And, uh, we didn't get through the finish line partly because the state legislature didn't finish, uh, some of their work, uh, this last legislative session. So in no particular order and with no particular priority, I'll just run through these kind of quickly. Uh, the state bonding bill is something that, uh, did not get passed this year. And so there is an opportunity potentially to, uh, have a discussion around perhaps including the jail project in a state bonding bill. Uh, we have been told and advised, uh, endlessly that that is so highly unlikely. Uh, and that many before us, the jurisdictions before us, particularly counties, have made the same request and it's always been turned down. So we're not necessarily optimistic, um, on that front, but we do feel like it is something that needs to be discussed. And the issue around, uh, and special needs that we have as a county around financing a jail are significant enough that we want to have that discussion and make that a legislative platform. Additionally, we can't, uh, forget that regardless of what happens in the state bonding bill, uh, it is highly likely we will need, uh, local option sales tax to push this forward. And, uh, if your approval tonight is to continue in that direction, uh, we felt it was important to also make that a legislative platform item. Uh, that legislatures knew that we were going to be, uh, pursuing. Uh, additionally, preserving the tax base is always a concern for the county, uh, particularly since we have a, a very small taxing area, but a very large service area. Uh, and of course we get funds from, uh, the state in a variety of different sources or ways. One of those is pilt funding or payment in lieu of taxes funding. Uh, we had made some pretty good progress, I think, as a, as a consortium and as a state on this topic. And we had expected to see actually some improvements, uh, through some legislation this year, uh, which did not, as I say, make it through the finish line. So we'll be picking up those efforts and pursuing them again. Uh, this has the potential to impact, uh, county revenues anywhere between three and maybe six hundred thousand dollars annually. So it's an important issue and it helps to correct some of the allocation, uh, formulas for the way the state calculates, um, aid in, uh, in, in payments in lieu of taxes. Uh, as well, county program aid is another area that we want to continue to push for some formula adjustments. Uh, there is a complicated, uh, set of challenges and, and issues in and Challenges and and issues in and around this this topic. But, uh, we want to continue to push for those. Again, this was something we felt like we made some ground on, uh, this year. Uh, and, uh, just didn't get through the finish line. So we're going to pick up our efforts on that and hopefully see some improvements. We were hoping for around a three hundred thousand dollar increase to revenues, uh, with these funding. Formula changes, uh, again, we didn't see that. And so, um, we're going to try again to to push that through the legislature. Next, we get into some areas of health and human services, uh, including state investments and local public health, uh, sort of as an overall. Um, the public health, uh, area of our operation and that of. Many other jurisdictions is is a priority and is, uh, something that does continue to require funding and financing of. Uh, so there's a number of different areas in this section that we'd like to have, uh, time and attention spent on. Uh, similarly, the mental health and development disabilities continuing of care is an area that we'd also like to see some adjustments. Um, the that's pretty detailed, uh, information that's in your packet. So. Um, I know we're getting a bit short on time, so I won't go through all those details. Um, but it is an important. A consideration for the county and does cost us, uh, considerable in administration. The whole family behavioral health and well-being area, uh, is in regard to supporting long-term sustainable funding. Particularly regarding the Family First Prevention Services Act. Um, and state resources in regard to investments in. Family resource centers and whole family behavioral health and well-being. We'd like to see some adjustments there as well. Um, HHS system transformation and modernization in regards to investments in systems. That update and improve collaboration and oversight and guidance to achieve efficiencies is really important as well. So we've included that. Also in the legislative package. Um, sunsetting the diversionary work program, uh, is a program that has, uh, unfortunately not. Had the results that we had hoped, um, and this is countywide, um, or I should say statewide. Uh, there's been, uh, uh, work going on at the Maxa, um. In the Maxa organization and they have prioritized this in twenty twenty-two. Uh, this would maximize county resources while helping to provide households with streamlined application processes for family cash programs. Uh, a family reporting modifications with a number of things there that we, uh, want to see some improvements on. Uh, medically ill and dangerous or forensic bed, uh, systems or or. Facilities. This is one that we've brought to you many times in regards to the cost the county gets to bear. When we have, um, non-medically, um. Necessary, uh, impatient, uh, treatment of psychiatric and, um, committed individuals. So. This is, um, something that will continue to plague our county and is costing us greatly at the moment. In fact, uh, we'll be talking about this. Uh, more and more over the next few weeks, uh, and likely month or two. Uh, we have situations that we brought to your attention which continue. And for example, we have one person, for example, costing us about fifty thousand dollars per month. Uh, in payments because they're housed, um. At a facility in the state, uh, that should be at a different facility in the state. And so the state sends us these bills. Uh, without, um, without making what we feel is a. A better effort in re- in repositioning those those persons. And so we get stuck with these extraordinarily high bills. Uh, and, uh, and that's a huge, huge cost to the county and and burden as well. So that's something we like to see some movement on as well. And then lastly, uh, we have transportation-related, uh, issues. Uh. We always sort of take the opportunity to just encourage the legislature to throw more money at transportation. I mean, as we all know, transportation is a huge. Cost, um, endeavor and that there's always needs in regards to. New projects or in the reconditioning or replacement of existing. Transportation infrastructure. So that's as well included in your packet. So it's kind of a long list, um. And, uh, it may be prudent for us to narrow that down if you should feel the need. Uh, alternatively, if you want us to prioritize these lists. Uh, or have any adjustments or additions to it, we we'd be open for any of that. And if you're not prepared this evening for comments and suggestions, we'll take them over the next week. And then make those adjustments in the next, uh, edition. Which again, we hope to have in front of you for your final approval consideration at the next meeting.
All right, thanks, Tom. It it is a pretty lengthy, uh, list, um. Uh, I don't know how many there are, but I I think, um. In the past, when we, uh, evaluated our legislative priorities, I think we kind of dwindled it down to maybe. To three or five, you know, something that, um. That that's, you know, more attainable for for us or. And I believe it was also something that AMC also, um, tries to encourage as well that way. Um, they, um, know what we would. Want to work towards, you know, I know the state bonding bill, the lost CPA. Um, are are all great things. And I think, you know, that just, uh. I feel for me that that I would, you know, want to make sure that we. Uh, keep an eye on this this coming legislative session. Uh, knowing the makeup of the legislature now and and I'm not too sure what their priorities are. Um, I I think that, you know, we we keep this list, but you know, try to figure out a way we can. Um, work towards these things as the, uh, session, you know, goes on this this year. Um, because I I agree, you know, that the DWP, you know, being a past recipient, um, on DWP, it it doesn't work. And, uh, you know, if the state is willing to, uh, do away and sunset that program, I would be all in favor. But, uh, you know, um, those are just my thoughts as as, you know, one, one commissioner. Anybody else?
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Craig. Um, one thing that I don't see on the list and it's already a long list, but I just. Always want to try to keep top of mind on, uh, childcare and and if there's anything that the state can do on supporting. Of our childcare crisis, uh, that would be something I would encourage adding to the list.
Any other? Questions, comments? All right, hearing none. Well, thanks, Tom. Uh, do appreciate you taking this to the the management team as well and and getting their thoughts. You know, I want to make sure that. Uh, we let them know that, you know, we here and and you know, are listening, um. But we will continue to keep an eye on it. And as you mentioned, we will be discussing this at our next meeting next Tuesday. So. If anybody has any questions or comments for Tom, in the meantime, maybe just reach out to him and let him know and. Uh, we could try to, you know, find, go through this with a with a. Uh, fine tooth comb and and see, you know, what what we feel is really, uh, attainable and and something that, uh. Is is achievable for this upcoming session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one comment. I would urge that if there are any other adjustments you'd like to make to the list, um. If you would wouldn't mind letting us know, I know it's kind of a quick turnaround, but by Thursday morning of this week. That's when we, um, have to get the agenda packets back out to you. And of course, we wouldn't be able to include any modifications in the packet. Uh, if we receive them after the public publishing of the packet. Uh, I suppose we could do that certainly at the meeting, but, uh, if if there was something top of mind that we could get included sooner, that would be great.
All right. Thank you. Okay, well, that brings us to item number nine, the administrator's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And if we can, maybe, um, I don't know how long it is. But I'm hoping that if we can try to maybe take a little break. To try to figure out the the video thing, uh, for the five o'clock meeting. I I'd appreciate that.
You bet. Um, I don't have too long of a report, but I do have some bad news because I don't believe we're going to be able to make any additional modifications to the system. Uh, without bringing in a, uh, technical expert, uh, and we have had the MIS staff here. Trying to troubleshoot the system, but, uh, it is a system that they're not technical experts on either. It seems to be. One of the components of the system not communicating with another. And so we've reset it a few times. But I'm, um, unfortunately, I'm afraid that what we are dealing with right now is kind of how we'll have to continue for the remainder of the meetings. Uh, so I apologize, but we will troubleshoot that and attempt to get that addressed before the next meeting.
Okay, thank you for the update, um, because I'm not too sure if that was, uh, expressed and, uh. I know that the public does, uh, tune into these and and I think that would probably help clarify, you know, the situation. So, continue on.
Thank you. Um, I have a kind of a number of good news, uh, pieces in the update this this afternoon, uh. Uh, you, I think most of you are aware, certainly those who attended the, uh, the Association of Minnesota Counties meeting. And award ceremony that, uh, the county did receive one of four outstanding county achievement awards statewide. Uh, and this is for exhibiting excellence and innovation. Inside our county, uh, the award was specifically for the reset program. And that was a program that, uh, we had presented to you, oh, probably a month and a half or two or so ago. Uh, and the board had encouraged us to submit it for a applicant or a, um, an award with AMC. So we did that and. Lo and behold, we became one of four statewide to, uh, to receive that award. So. We're really proud and, uh, and grateful, uh, that that we were recognized this way. And, uh, we sent a press release out also yesterday, I believe it was, um, on this particular issue. So we just want to again, uh, thank and appreciate those. Uh, in Health and Human Services and in the Sheriff's Office and in particular, uh, the Health and Human Services Director Becky Seacor. And Sheriff Ernie Biddle for their leadership and and innovation on developing a program that has. Uh, already improved the lives of seventy people in a short time and given them an opportunity to find alternatives to incarceration. Uh, and helping them become, uh, contributing members of our community. So, uh, so that's a great news story. Uh, additionally, we, uh, you might recall some time ago, we. Uh, had a groundbreaking and then we ultimately had a ribbon cutting for the Behavioral Health Crisis Center. This is the facility that Sanford is managing. Uh, we contributed about one point four million dollars of ARPA dollars to. Uh, and Sanford contributed, I want to say the better part of a million or so dollars as well, in addition to the county. Securing a grant for about three point four million dollars. Um, you know, we had hoped at the time when we were building this facility and applied for the grant that we would get a five million dollar grant award. Uh, that didn't happen. And so it left a funding shortfall, which Sanford and the county stepped up to fill. Uh, we've been working over the last several months, um, with the state. Uh, to reevaluate that project and, uh, it looks like. That there was some money that might be additionally available to the project, which we pursued. And with the tenacity of our Health and Human Services Director and others, uh, we've been able to. Secure the full five million dollar grant. So we have revised the grant award. Um, and, uh, and we'll be signing that. Tim signed it today. Uh, we actually have another document to sign, uh, here in the next day or two as well, but. The award will be increased from three point six million to five million dollars. So we will receive an additional one point four million back. Um, and then we'll have to sort of determine what what that sort of means. Do we? Do we, uh, put that back to ARPA dollars? Do we? Do we share that with Sanford? You know, what what happens? We don't have to make that decision. But I just wanted to let you know that that we will be receiving additional funding, uh, as reimbursement as part of a grant for that. So that's great news.
Mr. Chair, uh, can I ask you a quick question, Tom? Um, so. I went to that ribbon cutting ceremony, which was what, two months ago, and they're still not open. Do you know what their timeline is to open and why? What hold what's holding it up and?
Um, the Health and Human Services Director Becky Seacor is going to come up and answer that question. So she's on her way. If you want to give just a moment to her, that's okay.
Good afternoon, Becky Seacor. I have visited with Sanford. They're having difficulty staffing the programs. Which is common for everybody right now. They told me the last time I spoke to them early January.
Okay, I I just know that, you know, they. Moved personnel into that, like administrative personnel. There's a lot of people in Bemidji and in the in the greater, you know, Bell Trammy County area. That have been drawing, that have been seeking, um, psychiatric help and, uh. A lot of people lost their psychiatrist and now they're not even open. And so it's. A little bit frustrating and, you know, I don't know all the ins and outs, but I sure feel for all of the many, many people in. In our county that are now not able to seek their regular psychiatric care. It puts people in a really difficult position. I know way too many people that are that are suffering because of this. So. I hope they can staff up in a hurry because we really need those services.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Olson. Uh, just continuing really quickly, we did, uh, go through the entire staff in the last week or so and. Provided service awards recognition, uh, that happened at the end of November. Um, moving on also, the committee list. Uh, we would typically discuss, uh, in December, but we will be pushing that conversation off to January third. After the two new commissioners are seated and can have, uh, influence over, uh, the development of that committee list as well. So that's why it's not on your agenda tonight with some of the other. Administrative, um, actions that are typically handled at this time of year. Wanted to remind you also that those going to chat about from now into the future, uh, that that interview schedule has changed. And so. Uh, the new time is nine thirty, uh, so you want to make that a note. Um, also wanted to update you on the Health and Human Services Director position. We had, uh, I think I mentioned to you, we had ten, uh, qualified applicants and we narrowed that down to six that we wanted to interview. We invited those six to interview. A few of them dropped out along the way. Uh, but we did conduct interviews and, um, and deliberated late last week. And we have a little bit of work left to do on that, uh, on that decision-making. And I'm hopeful that in the next day or two, we'll be able to make an announcement. Um, so I know that those involved in the process are eager to hear. And, uh, and those that were also, uh, in the deliberation are are excited to have this, um. Kind of close out and and make a selection and move forward. So that's where we are at the moment on that. Uh, then lastly, I wanted to give you a couple of updates, uh, on important dates coming up. Uh, the new commissioner orientation again scheduled for Friday, this Friday, December sixteenth, starting, starting at eight o'clock and we'll go to about ten thirty. Uh, we're also going to have a special meeting with local area legislators on December twenty-first to discuss the jail project. Um, as we had talked to sometime or for some time, we wanted to begin socializing the. The county's, uh, story and need for this new facility as well as its plans. To approach the legislature for the lost application and and so on and so forth. So. Uh, we'll be meeting with them as many as we can on December twenty-first, um. At ten o'clock. And then, um, December twentieth, we actually are bringing back an employee, uh. I guess for lack of better terms, celebration. Uh, this is the what's been called the goodie party, I guess. Uh, last time it was held was in two thousand nineteen before the pandemic. So, uh, we wanted to invite you to this. Uh, it is sort of a roaming open house that's, uh, held all day long with just kind of snacks and things. It doesn't mean staff are standing around all day long. Uh, it just means people roll in and out as they. Have time in their schedule and socialize and grab a snack and then move move back on to their, uh, to their daily routine. Uh, so that's going to happen on the twentieth. And then, uh, the next board meeting, just as a reminder, is also scheduled for December twentieth. Uh, that's in one week's time because we moved today's, uh, up from a week ago. Lastly, just wanted to remind you, um, respectfully that. We have, because we had so much scheduled for the work session today, uh, we had to move a number of our discussion items. That had decision-making in them anyways, or decisions that we were hoping to have. We moved those to the regular meeting. And so you'll see that your regular meeting has, you know, six or seven or so different topics on it. Uh, we are under a tight timeframe for that meeting because we have the budget hearing that starts at six o'clock. So, um. I just wanted to remind you of that because we want to be efficient with our time and in, uh, in our. Attempts to keep on schedule for the budget hearing at six o'clock. That's all I have for you in the update. I'll stand for any questions you might have.
All right, thanks, Tom. Uh, I do appreciate the update. That sounds like, um. Uh, you have been pretty busy, you know, uh, the past few weeks and and, uh. Looking forward to, you know, future meetings, um, having discussions. I guess more in particular, uh, the committee assignments. I'm glad that we are not making any type of, um. Decisions tonight, um, you know, prior to going live on YouTube, um. I I was sitting back, you know, listening to the conversations and and listening to how. How, uh, committee committee assignments were being, uh, kind of brokered. Uh, by two commissioners, uh, prior to the meeting, which is, which is alarming and and upsetting and and hearing some of the comments and. And allegations that. and allegations that now one has said said about me. So I'm looking forward to to having these committee assignment discussions and and I'm hopeful that that the hard feelings that my my colleagues have against me, you know, don't have a have any bearing on 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 their decision to support my request. Other than that, are there any other questions for Tom? Hearing none, we will adjourn until five o'clock. Thank you. All right, well, it's five o'clock, so I will call the Beltran County Regular Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Jim Lukicek, District Five.
Commissioner Richard Anderson, District Three.
Commissioner Craig Gosbick, District One.
Commissioner Reed Olson, District Two.
Commissioner Tim Sumner, District Four. We do have a quorum, so please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our general comments by the Board Chair. Just want to remind folks that we do have two commissioners attending via Zoom, which is allowable by state statute. And that our votes tonight are going to be roll call votes. And that is my comments for tonight. So citizens addressing the board. Anyone wishing to address the county board on an item not on the agenda we come forward at this time to be recognized by the Board Chair. Please state your name and address for the record. Comments are limited to five minutes. A personnel complaint against an individual county employee may not be heard initially at a board meeting. Personnel complaints may be submitted to the board in writing through the county administrator's office. A person addressing the board may use profanity or vulgar language. And again, I do apologize, I can't see the attendance in a boardroom. So if Commissioner Anderson can can advise me if anybody is approaching.
I don't see anyone approaching at this point yet.
Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will continue on with your agenda. So I'll ask for a motion to approve of the agenda with any additions, corrections, or deletions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We'll be moving the from consent agenda, we'll move seven K and it'll go under the regular agenda thirteen point one approval of the bike or precedent trail resolution.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do you have a second by Commissioner Olson? Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just asked to make sure that that everybody has their mics on because it it's really hard to hear.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. I didn't have mine on.
All right, I will ask for the vote. Commissioner Lukicik.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gosbick.
Yes.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner, yes. We have unanimous unanimous consent to approve the agenda. We have a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Gosbick is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lukicik. Any further discussion?
Just to be sure that we did remove that one item, I'm sorry, I didn't hear everything that Commissioner Anderson said. So we removed the the one item from the consent agenda for discussion.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Commissioner Gosbick.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lukicik.
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner, yes. We do have a unanimous vote to approve the consent agenda. We will continue on to item eight swearing in a patrol deputy.
Commissioners, again, appreciate the opportunity to do this. It's very important to me and our staff that we recognize them during this this time. And we're going to move really quick because I know you got tight agendas, but we got a little bonus tonight. We're going to swear and also two of our communications officers too. So we'll step over here. I know it's not mic'd up, but family will be taking care of this. All right. So for all of you, this is Zachary Rupert. Zach, you're in the right hand. And state or repeat after the I. Zachary Rupert, we solemnly swear, we solemnly swear to support and uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution, the laws of the state of Minnesota. To support and uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the laws of the state of Minnesota. To serve the citizens of Beltran County, the state of Minnesota, in the United States of America, honestly and faithfully. To serve the citizens of Beltran County, the state of Minnesota, in the United States of America, honestly and faithfully. Be loyal to my supervisors and fellow deputies and obey and enforce the law without fear, favor, or discrimination to class, color, race, or creed. And have the courage to hold myself accountable for our actions. Be loyal to my supervisors and fellow deputies and obey and enforce the law without fear, favor, or discrimination class, color, race, or creed. And have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. To conduct myself at all times and report with the highest moral standards and never commit any act that will reflect discredit on the Beltran County Sheriff's Office or any member thereof. To conduct myself at all times and report with the highest moral standards and never commit any act that will reflect reflect the credit of the Beltran County Sheriff's Office or any member thereof. And to help those in danger or distress, if necessity arrives, lay down my life rather than swear in the path of duty. And help those in danger or distress and if necessity arrives, lay down my life rather than swear in the path of duty. And at all times fulfill my oath as a Beltran County Deputy Sheriff. And at all times fulfill my oath as a Beltran County Deputy Sheriff. All this I solemnly swear with the best of my knowledge and ability, so hold me up. All this I solemnly swear with the best of my ability and knowledge, so hold me up. These, of course, get reported with the our reporter's office and then they'll be part of the personnel file as well as Dan Stark and Bird, you've been getting a lot of them. But we're kind of slow getting her on, thanks for stopping us. She just started here just this last Monday with us. Again, working on the engagements obviously. Dan, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name. We solemnly swear to support and uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution, the laws of the state of Minnesota.
To support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Serve the citizens of Beltran County, the state of Minnesota, in the United States of America, honestly and faithfully. Conduct myself at all times and report with the highest moral standards and never commit any act that will reflect discredit on the Beltran County Sheriff's Office or any member thereof.
Keep myself at all times in accordance with the highest moral standards.
Be loyal to my supervisors and fellow officers, obey and enforce the law without fear, favor, discrimination class, color, race, or creed. And have the courage to hold myself accountable for our actions.
Be loyal to my supervisors and fellow officers and obey and enforce the laws without fear, favor, or discrimination to class, color, race, or creed. And have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
All this I solemnly swear with the best of my knowledge and ability, so hold me up.
All right. I can't tell if the ceremony is is complete or not.
It's it's complete now, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff, and welcome aboard Deputy Rupert. I do apologize, I couldn't hear who the communications personnel were. But but welcome aboard as well and and thanks. Um, but but welcome aboard as well and and uh, uh, thanks for being part of uh, you know, Beltran County.
Welcome aboard, Zach.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. We will continue on to the designation of legal newspaper for the year twenty twenty-three. Tom?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, this is a very light administrative item. Uh, each year we have to designate a legal publication for Beltran County. Uh, the uh, um, the only one that meets the requirements uh, would be the Bemidji Pioneer, and so uh, we've asked them to submit a bid. They did so, uh, in addition to their uh, printer's bond. Uh, so they're compliant with the requests and the requirements of the statute. Uh, they have maintained a rate that was simple, that is exactly the same as this year's rate, so uh, there's no increase in in rate service or anything, so it's just kind of a formality in regards to designating them again as our legal newspaper for next year.
I'll move a designation of the of the newspaper to um, the legal newspaper to uh, uh, be awarded to Pioneer, Bemidji Pioneer for the year twenty twenty-three.
We got a motion by Commissioner Olson. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mister Chair, with a comment.
Uh, second by Commissioner Lukicik. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mister Chair. Um, for a point of clarification to the general public, that is inserted in the byline, right? Because that is a subsidiary of the Pioneer Law, right? So that's just a point of clarification.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other uh, discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Roll call. Oh, sorry, sorry.
I got this. All those in favor, um, say aye. Uh, Commissioner Lukicik?
Yes.
Commissioner Gosbick?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sumner? Aye. Um, the motion passed, uh, unanimous vote to designate the Bemidji Pioneer, the legal newspaper for the year twenty twenty-three. We will continue on to um, MDH contract for strong foundations, evidence-based home visiting. Uh, Becky?
Well, Commissioner Sumner, you're actually gonna get Megan. Um, this is Megan Hoyer, I am Director of Public Health. Thank you so much, Commissioners, for giving me a few moments of your time this evening. Um, I bring this grant before you. Uh, it's changed slightly since uh, years past. Commissioner Sumner will be tasked with signing off on it, but I just wanted to let you guys know a couple of the changes from the previous grant. We have received this evidence-based home visiting grant for upwards of ten years, so this will continue to be similar funding. It has a new name and we had to apply for it individually rather than as a collaborative, which we have done so in the past. We were awarded the grant as a community health board. It is slightly increased from years past, so we are excited about this. The goal will be to serve twenty-five families to start out, and they have designated a certain amount of money per family that we serve. So if we're able to increase in the following years, we anticipate that we might even receive more funding moving forward. It's a five-year grant. It will help, the increase will help um, with a slight decrease in our local public health grants, so that will make us whole with our public health budget, again allowing us not to ask for any levy funding. So just wanted to see if anybody had any questions to clarify that grant. It will help continue to support our families' strength-building skills, um, bonding with some of our young parents. Any questions from the board?
Well, Megan, uh, thanks for that, and and I've, you know, been receiving this uh, DocuSign uh, email for quite some time, and I'm glad that uh, um, that it's finally being brought uh, before the board uh, for signature. I'm just kind of curious to to see uh, what kind of partnership uh, this um, wh- what partnership we have with the Litch Lake Band and and uh, Quinn CHB. I'm I'm not too sure who will Quinn uh, CHB is or are, but um, maybe in the future, it could be a future work meeting um, topic. Just to see what type of uh, uh, I I'm curious to learn more about, you know, what what exactly um, the work uh, includes, so, but that's it's my comments.
That's an excellent suggestion, Commissioner Sumner. I think that would be maybe a a really appropriate topic for our next um, community health board meeting, if a couple of weeks out is okay.
Yeah, I'm not too sure what time or where we have our or when we have our our community health board meetings, but uh, yes, that would, you know, that would be great if we can include that on on the agenda for that.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
Just a comment. Um, I just want to say that attending Shack and various health committee meetings, um, we are one of the uh, few uh, counties that does does not have a levy attached to public health. So I'm was pleased to hear that the grant came through to make you whole.
So were we. Thank you, everybody.
No, thank you, Megan. All right, so I will uh, ask for a motion to approve the MDH contract for strong foundations, evidence-based home visiting.
Also move, Mister Chair.
We got a motion by Commissioner Olson. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Anderson.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukicik?
Yes.
Commissioner Gosbick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner? Yes. Uh, motion carry unanimously, uh, five oh. So we will uh, continue on to the twenty twenty-three board meeting schedule. Tom?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, but we have before you for your consideration, the tentative uh, schedule for next year's board meetings. As you know, the county has traditionally followed a first Tuesday, third Tuesday meeting schedule. Uh, we talked previously uh, last month, there were two uh, dates that were um, in conflict with that routine schedule. One of them was the July fourth uh, holiday, and another one was the AMC um, annual conference, and so we've made the adjustments for your directives and included that. Uh, additionally, we've included the chat about radio session schedule uh, and the management team schedule as well. I do want to make a note that uh, Commissioner-elect Joe Gould had made a request that uh, we make an adjustment to the rotation on the chat about radio session schedule as well as the management team schedule. Uh, we were able to accommodate that request, and that is uh, what we have for your consideration in a handout tonight. Uh, sorry for those of you attending remotely, we don't have that for you, but essentially he wanted the fifth um, rotation, uh, so I don't think it impacts really anyone else for that matter. Um, he was also concerned about potentially not being a part of this discussion and having some concerns with uh, meeting dates, but uh, we we sort of feel like these meeting dates are fairly set. I mean, we can't change the chat about radio session, they they dictate to uh, dictate that to us. The management team meetings are, you know, kind of as they are, and so are the board meetings, so it seemed prudent that we could move this forward. Uh, given the same um, schedules that we have honored in the past. What we did agree to do, however, is move, as I mentioned earlier, my administrators' report, the committee assignments discussion to January third, because that is a bit more um, involved in regards to the selection of certain meetings and and dates and times and those sorts of things. So we separated those two actions, and the action before you tonight is just the board meeting schedules, chat about radio session, and management team schedules for your consideration.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three board meeting schedule?
So moved, Anderson.
Motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Gosbick. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh, I will call for the vote. Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukicik?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gosbick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner? Yes. Vote uh, passed unanimously. So we will continue on to the uh, Commissioner's salary and per diem rates. Tom?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, each year, the commission uh, is afforded the opportunity to uh, evaluate and make adjustments to its salary, and uh, we have provided some guidance to you for your consideration regarding the salary adjustments. Uh, our recommendation as a staff uh, is that the commissioner's salaries be increased to reflect the same increases that have been awarded to uh, non-union and union employees alike, uh, and that that adjustment take place effective January first of twenty twenty-three. Uh, that amount would mean that if you agreed, the total annual commissioner's salary would move up to thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars and thirty-three cents for twenty twenty-three. Additionally, we have also included the per diem rates uh, which remain unchanged uh, from this year, uh, as well as the per diem eligibility list for reimbursement for various committee assignments. Uh, again, I'll just remind you that only the committees listed on the resolution are eligible for the per diem, uh, and that uh, if there is a commissioner that accepts a committee assignment that's not on the list, that's approved, then there is no per diem that can be paid according to state statute, so no changes are being recommended to that list at this point in time. We did make several adjustments in preparation for the jail committee and subcommittees and that sort of stuff, so those are already included. Um, and that's what we have for your consideration and approval.
All right. One committee that uh, was recently reenacted this summer, the Bemidji Joint Area um, Airport Zoning Board, Jazz B, um, and that I would request that that get added to the list. I don't see it on here.
Okay, uh, I will ask for a motion uh, to approve the Commissioner's salary and per diem rates.
So moved, Anderson.
The motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second?
Uh, Mister Chair?
Yes.
Just as a point of order, uh, Commissioner Gosbick's uh, request, is that being included in the motion?
It is.
Okay, and then does the second agree, or had we had a second?
Haven't had a second.
Okay. Okay.
There a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Olson, um, any further discussion? Uh, Tom, you know, uh, you mentioned that uh, no per diem can be paid for, you know, uh, statute, but I think in the past, uh, if if and when, you know, Commissioner does uh, receive another committee assignment, that we do have an opportunity uh, throughout the year to uh, revisit the list to add any um, committee assignments to to that list, correct?
Um, Mister Chair, I'm not certain if the statute obligates you to fix those um, amounts and assignments at the beginning of the year, much like it does picking a newspaper. So I have to do a little research on that for you before I can get you that answer.
Okay.
We've added, Mister Chair, we've added committees in the middle of the year before.
Okay.
So I mean, I don't know if that's, if it's maybe that's not appropriate, but I know we've done it.
It actually does state that right in this document, uh, right above the now, therefore. It says also, any official committee or subcommittee identified as eligible for per diem at a regular county board meeting and as appointed by the county board of commissioners throughout the course of the year.
Okay, okay. Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Commissioners. I I didn't get that uh, far on my agenda, Bill scroll in here, so I do appreciate that. Um, and and Tom, can you remind me the last time that um, that the that there has been any sort of um, uh, adjustments to to salaries and and per diem rates for the Commissioners? I I know a number of years ago, they sent the, sent them, sent it to Baker Tilly, I believe, who who does the evaluations. Um, has, can you remind me when the last time that was done?
Uh, that's a great question, uh, Mister Chairman. I don't know exactly when the Baker Tilly analysis was done, but I do know that we've looked at uh, Commissioner salaries, much like at at similar times that we look at staff salaries, and uh, the HR director and I had talked about Commissioner salaries and felt that they were still in alignment with regard to market. Uh, in regards to your first question, uh, how often are they updated? They're updated annually, and uh, this year you all received a three percent increase to base salary, and what's being recommended for next year is a seven percent increase. Um, so uh, they do get adjusted generally annually, and um, as far as per diem rates, I don't know exactly the last time the rate amount was adjusted. Um, I think that was seen deemed as reasonable in regard to the timeframes, because you do have a different rate depending upon the length of time that you attend at a meeting, and so um, but that was set before I joined the county, so I don't have that history available.
But I appreciate that, you know, and oftentimes, you know, as as Commissioners in in the county board, um, we 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 have to to tread lightly when it comes to our setting our our salaries and per diems and things like that, but I I felt that I was probably important for the the public to know, um, you know, how uh, we go about uh, doing this, um, because I can't remember if this was uh, discussed last year or not, so uh, just basically for for the sake of discussion.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to mention that when it was, uh, when we had the total um, s- schedule looked at, uh, it was, one of the discussion points was is to keep it so it doesn't drop below the market value. We should just keep it with negotiations, whatever the non-union folks uh, received, that that should be also part of the Commissioners, so that there wasn't a need to worry that we weren't going to keep pace with the rest. That's just a rule of thumb, it wasn't a a motion.
All right, uh, hearing, uh, no further discussion. Um, I will call for the vote. Uh, Commissioner Gosbick?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukicik?
Abstain.
Commissioner Olson? Commissioner Olson?
Uh, yes, sorry. Yes.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner Sumner. All right, the motion carries, uh, for, yes, and one extension. And we will continue on to the twenty twenty-three development fund grants. Tom?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, we have for your consideration tonight, um, the twenty twenty-three development fund grant package, and uh, we're seeking your direction and approval on awards and award amounts. Um, the grant application packet was large, we had a lot of folks that um, made application this year, and unfortunately, as you will recall, we had to lower the uh, award amount total uh, down to forty-five thousand dollars, which makes this a pretty tough um, uh, exercise for you folks. The uh, packet was emailed to you on December first to give you as much time as possible to kind of go through the packet, since it was large, and uh, we are hopeful that you have ready your scores, uh, i.e. the dollar amounts you'd like to fund for each of the various uh, applicants, uh, which then, as we have traditionally done, uh, will uh, be consolidated into a final grant award. Uh, and then that will be the final amount that we'll communicate back to those who applied. Uh, we have up on the screen here, the award request with the organization, and then each of your uh, areas uh, that will identify what you'd like to see awarded in a proportion to those org- or to those various organizations, and then the average, which would be essentially the final grant award on the very right column, will be the amount that cumulatively those would receive. Will be the amount that cumulatively those would receive. So about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars worth of requests and forty-five thousand dollars worth of available funding.
Before we continue, can you put the spreadsheet back up there? I'm not seeing it.
Were you able to see it?
Yeah, when when it first came up and then now I just see the truth. Yeah, there you go. Now now I can see it. Thank you. All right. Well, we had some homework to do prior to today's meeting and as the administrator mentioned. We only have forty-five thousand dollars to allocate this year or up to forty-five thousand dollars to allocate this year. And. So if we can start with Commissioner Anderson.
Okay, I've got the Bemidji County Ag Association, I have sixteen thousand. Dropping down to the Veterans Memorial, five thousand. Black Duck Area History and Art, one thousand. Boys and Girls Club, three thousand. Greater Bemidji, twenty thousand. Comes to forty-five, I believe.
Very good.
We'll just go in order of. There you go. We'll go in that order. Commissioner Goswicke?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the first one there, eleven thousand nine twenty-five for the County Ag Association. And then dropping down to the Curling Club, ten thousand. And. The Veterans Memorial, ten thousand. Black Duck History Center, three thousand seventy-five. And the Greater Bemidji, ten thousand.
Very good.
Commissioner Lukachik?
Ag Association, ten thousand. Curling Club, ten thousand. Veterans Memorial, ten thousand. Black Duck Area History Arts Center, three thousand seventy-five. Greater Bemidji, ten thousand. What's missing?
Just click off of the cell.
There you go. That's better now. And then the remainder, the difference between forty-three zero seventy-five and forty-five, one thousand nine twenty-five to the Boys and Girls Club. One thousand nine twenty-five, I think that'll make it. One thousand, yeah. That make forty-five? There you go.
Commissioner Olson?
Yep, okay, the Ag Association, ten thousand. The Cross Country Ski Club, three thousand. Am I going to go in order here? The Curling Club, three thousand five hundred. The Community Theater, five thousand. The BDA, the Downtown Alliance, two thousand. The Vets Memorial, five thousand. Greater Bemidji, ten thousand. Boys and Girls Club, five thousand. And Gallery North, then that should be fifteen hundred and. Wow, first try.
Thank you. All right, for for myself, I have Greater Bemidji. But as a small business checkup, ten thousand. I'm not too sure if you have individual sales for that, but for for total total for Greater Bemidji would be. Oh, yeah, you do have. And then fifteen thousand for the support new and expanding business. I believe that is.
It's all part of Greater Bemidji.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, if you give the total for Greater Bemidji, that would be ideal.
Twenty-five thousand. But I I do know and recall from past allocations that. If if we wanted to wanted it to a specific area that. In our response or to in their award letter, you know, that's you know, kind of what. What we did in the past and so those would be, that would be my request for Greater Bemidji for those two. Opportunities there. The Boys and Girls Club, five thousand. And the Vets, five thousand. So that should be thirty-five thousand. And. You know, I I want to. You know, maybe have some sort of discussion about, you know, the the egg, you know, I I. I hear year after year that, you know, it's. It's the only one that fits all all three criterias of the Development Fund Grant, but you know, I want to make, you know, make a statement that. Those are county buildings and I I truly believe that if those are county buildings. That should be, you know, the county's responsibility because as you see. You know, the the our allocations have have been dwindling. Year after year and I would hope that at some point, you know, we can rebuild. Some some reserves for. Future projects that we may not. May not hear about, may not know about, you know, we just heard of a a good program project going on, capital campaign going on today. With the Northwoods and I I truly believe that. If we had money, you know, on this fund that, you know, this this would be a great place for them to. To, you know, ask for for a grant. So with that. Those, you know, would be my request in hopes that. In in my effort in trying to rebuild. The the reserve to to replenish the fund. You know, these are all great projects, you know, and and great things going on in our community. And it and it's hard to, you know, make these decisions. You know, these these financial decisions when. When I know that each and every one of these organizations are are doing great things. But, you know, we we have to tighten our belts as well. So with that, I will. I will forego the the remaining ten thousand in hopes I can ask for an additional ten thousand next year.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so we've entered the data into the spreadsheet and totaled the proportionate numbers and on the very right-hand side of the screen. We are showing the final award amount that will be communicated to each of the applicants. I just want to make sure you have a look at that and that there are no changes that you'd like to reconsider. Before we ask for your final approval on that and then we can. Get that communication and award letter off this week to each of those organizations.
Any questions, comments?
Do we need to make a motion?
You do.
I make a motion that we accept these, this amount of money for each of those organizations.
We got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Olson. Any further discussion?
Hearing none, I'll call for the chair.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I I would really like to see if I have consensus with the rest of the board. To make sure we put a note in there to all of the folks stating that this is an exceptional year. Just something that kind of clarifies why the awards are so much lower. I I'm hoping they know that, but I a brief paragraph. Along with the award that just says it's a it's an extra special year. And. It's lower than normal and we're hoping we can build that fund back up for future years. It's done a lot of great things for our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukachik. Tom, so. After today, there will be no remaining funds. In the Development Fund, is that is that correct?
No, there's forty-five. No, Mr. Chair, there are remaining funds in the in the fund amount. The the challenge that we were communicating and talking about a couple of weeks ago. Was in relation to the next installment of the seventy-five thousand dollar Veteran Homes, Veteran Home allotment. And whether or not a insurgent of additional funds through apportionment for two thousand twenty-three. Would be able to cover that. I've had preliminary discussions with the Natural Resources. Director and we're we're going to present next week. On this very issue in regard to apportionment recommendations and fund balance. And it it unfortunately is shaping up to be almost an identical year. As we've had this year in regards to available funds. That does change as we make the last installment to the Veterans Home. And hopefully we get more caught up on the reforestation challenges, but but for next year. I'm I'm sorry to say that at the moment, barring your direction to us. It does look as bleak as it did this year.
Okay. All right, I guess knowing that. Can I change my my amounts? And maybe do five to the Curling Club, five thousand?
Mr. Chair, we have an order, we have a motion on the on the table. We'd need to rescind that motion.
You you could amend the motion as well or rescind it. Either of those two would work. So you can, Commissioner Sumner, you can offer an amendment to the motion. It would have to be seconded and agreed to. And then the motion can continue in its approval process.
All right, well, I I think that's fine. You know, I want to make sure that we, you know, I know that we have money in there, but you know, I want to look. Look at this from, you know, a long-term perspective as well and and try to do my part and and. Replenishing that fund as as, you know, Commissioner Lukachik has has mentioned. So with that, I'll just. Forego that request and and ask if there's any any further discussion. All right. Hearing none, we got. Motion by Commissioner Anderson and second by Commissioner Olson. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, Commissioner Lukachik?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Goswicke?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner? Yes. So the two thousand twenty-three Development Fund Grants have been. Has been passed with unanimous consent. That will bring us down to the Commissioners' Business Items. Commissioner Goswicke?
The bike, the bike trail, thirteen point one.
I I apologize. Thank you. So we will go to the bike trail. Tom?
Well, I'll just make a motion that we that we direct staff to pursue the grant that will pay for one hundred percent of the construction costs of the bike trail. Partnering with the city out to the the high school in Jean Dillon along Division.
We got a motion.
I get that motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Olson, second by Commissioner Anderson. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll just reiterate. The reason I will not be in favor of this is not because I'm against bikes and not because I'm against walking and not because I'm against community and. And but I'm voting against it because. I simply want to make a statement that we need to prioritize. Our needs, especially in the transportation industry, and that's the only reason I'm voting against it. We need to prioritize where. We need the money the most and I'd feel that this is not any of our doing. It's the state and it's the it's the development of that, how that money gets split. By MNDOT and because I sat on the TAC, the Transportation Advisory Committee, I saw a lot of things that I I was not in favor of. And they did things without asking us and without getting input. It's the only reason I'm voting against it. I'll just say a polite no when it's time to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukachik.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, this Commissioner Goswicke. I I would echo Commissioner Lukachik's feelings on this as far as the the state spending money on. Things, you know, if they got extra money to spend, we certainly have lots of roads that could use it, you know, get lots of calls from constituents on. On the tough shape of some of their roads and we would really love to see them put the emphasis on roads and bridges more so than than trails. There again, nothing against trails or biking or anything like that, but we just, you know, I think it's a higher priority to to have our roads in good shape and safe. Safe actual roads too, so I am going to support it because I feel like it's. You know, the money is going to be spent by somebody else if if we don't spend it and we'll bring it here and get a good trail made with it, but I would like the state to reprioritize things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukachik?
No.
Commissioner Goswicke?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner? Yes. Motion carried. Or one? All right, we will continue on to, we will wrap Commissioners' Business Items, lobbying legislative issues and. Commissioners' Reports into one. Because we will be starting. The next meeting very shortly, so Commissioner Anderson?
I'm fine, thank you.
Commissioner Lukachik?
I'm dandy, thank you.
Commissioner Goswicke?
No, I'm fine too.
Commissioner Olson?
I'll just quickly say it's been kind of fun going to meetings for the last time. I don't know, bittersweet, I guess. But I'll be going down to Shack at the end of the week for my last Shack meeting and I got to go to the. AMC Annual Conference for my last time and that was a heck of a lot of fun and that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, same. I I know it was it was great to go to the AMC Annual Conference. You know, I want to. You. You let Becky and 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 Sheriff, Piddle, other staff, you know, how how much it. It meant to to see, you know, a lot of folks. Really receptive to the to the award that AMC has has presented, Bemidji County. You know, after after that, you know, there was quite a few people approaching, you know, asking. Who to contact in regards to that, so you know, I want to give credit where credit is due and and I I strongly believe our. Our staff are second to none and and we're lucky to to have them. So with that, that is my report and. We do have the upcoming meeting next week and. And so with that, just look over the the chat about and and management team, the remainder of the year schedule. And we will be back at six o'clock or the. To adopt the resolution for the two thousand twenty-three levy. So. And and that will be live and on YouTube as well, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
All right. We are adjourned. See you back shortly. All right, it is six o'clock, so we will begin the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget meeting.
Good evening, Tim. This is Jody Treat. I'm just going to make a quick announcement before we start the public hearing.
Okay, sounds good.
Good evening, everyone. Um, just a reminder that this public hearing will be discussing Beltrami County's budget. If you have questions regarding your individual properties, Joe Skarik, Beltrami County Assessor, is here right in the back, and he will take you over in the conference room. We have a conference room opened up over there and discuss your concerns with you this evening or set up an appointment to meet with you later on. So again, we won't be discussing individual properties this evening, but the county budget as a whole. So, Joe, if you want to take anyone that wants to go?
We'll go next, the one over here.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson, Anderson can advise me when we can begin?
Jody is up at podium now, Tim.
Okay.
So if you want to open the public hearing, um, then we can have Diane bring up the PowerPoint.
Okay, do we need a motion to open up the public hearing?
So moved, Anderson.
We got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, sir second.
Commissioner Gosbick second.
Second by Commissioner Gosbick. Do we need a vote? I just need a motion in a second.
Uh, you need a roll call vote, Mr. Chair.
That, Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukic?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gosbick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner, yes, we have unanimous consent to open the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget.
Thank you and good evening. As I mentioned earlier, we are going to be discussing the county's budget process and budget numbers for our truth and taxation public hearing. Um, after the presentation, if you choose to come up and say a few words to the commissioners, the mic will be open for you to um to come up and state your concerns or questions.
Okay, Jody, uh, before that, um, the same rules, the five-minute period does apply?
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, generally we allow five minutes for a public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't see if there's a crowd in in the audience or not, so um if somebody can uh uh let me know, I'd appreciate that. So you you can continue on, Jody.
You're gonna have to let us know if this broken.
Okay, go ahead. Did you do that? Okay. So our Beltrami County's budget process for two thousand twenty-three expenditures started in June of twenty-two. Um, we had a budget kickoff meeting with our management team. The department heads were given spreadsheets for them to create their budgets based on three-year averages. So the uh department heads put together the compilation of what the budget would would look like using their three-year averages in June. In July, those presentations were made to Beltrami County's management team. At that management team uh meeting, we had discussions about different budget items. Adjustments were made in the budget, and then at the end of July, uh, budget department heads presented their budget numbers to the budget committee. The budget committee each year is made up of two county commissioners, and I believe this year it was Commissioner Gosbick and Commissioner Sumner, the county administrator, the county auditor treasurer, the county sheriff, Health and Human Services Director, and two other uh county department heads who this year they were Veteran Service Officer Shane Gustafson and MIS Director Kevin Warren. We met with all of the department heads and went through the budgets. Coming out of that, changes were made going into August. The calculation of the budget and levy were put together, uh, including a compilation of the budget book. In September, the first meeting in September, that budget book was presented to the commissioners who then had two weeks until the last, the second meeting in September to discuss and make any changes uh to the the budget present or the budget that we presented. Um, and then they voted to carry a preliminary budget forward. Through September, through November was a comment period for commissioners to take comments from citizens. We also sent out the proposed tax statements to all individual property owners. That brings us to our our truth and taxation public hearing this evening, so you will, after I get done with this presentation, be able to hear from any citizens that wish to comment. We do need to have a fa- final levy and budget adopted by the end of December. So we're hoping that after this meeting, you will be able to adopt the budget and levy resolutions after hearing citizen comment. I will give it a try. I think it's you. Our total expenditures that were compiled from all of our department heads comes to ninety-nine million nine hundred eighty thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. This was information that these are the expenditures that were put together by the department heads, gone through the management team for changes and clarification, then went to the budget committee for more changes or clarification. The makeup of those expenditures are thirty-three percent to general government, which makes up tax collection, license center, any general government, general revenue type of function, the sheriff's office, the attorney's office, those type of functions. Thirty-two percent with Health and Human Services, twenty-nine percent to highway, uh, two percent to our debt service, and then four percent for other expenditures. Okay. So that ninety-nine million nine eighty-seven ninety-eight is what we start out with with our expenditures. So that's the red number at the top. We then figure out what other revenues that we have coming in. We are estimating to have forty-two million nine ninety-eight four ninety-seven in intergovernmental revenues come in, charges per service of nine point eight million, other revenues, three point five million. Other financing sources including included in this five point five million dollar number is the ARPA funding that we will be using. Um, property, uh, sales tax, other taxes and special assessments come to nine million. So what we do is we take all of those revenues, compare it to what we have for expenditures, and that leaves us with the property tax levy of twenty-eight million nine hundred forty-seven dollars, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars.
Jody? If I can, um, it looks like we have a a slide presentation, but I all I see is the truth and taxation public hearing. I don't know if if there's something you guys can do on on your end. I think that would be helpful for for myself and, you know, maybe Commissioner Olson. I don't know if you're seeing the same thing. Um, I just think it would be hard for, there you go. It's the good be hard for the the public to
Thank you.
to uh follow along. I I appreciate that.
Okay, so in order to balance our budget with the expenditures that were brought forth or that were um calculated through the all of the meetings throughout the summer, that comes down to a property tax levy of twenty-eight million nine forty-seven three one three. Okay, go to the next. The makeup of that property tax levy is, again, general revenue has fifty percent of fifty-six percent of that levy, again, making up the the Sheriff's Department. of that levy, again, making up the sheriff's department, the jail, any services in most services in our building here, environmental services, license center, tax collection, auditor's office, admin, health and human or human resources, those make up the fifty percent, fifty-six percent of the levy. Health and Human Services has twenty-nine percent of the levy. Again, they receive more funding, state and federal funding, so their reliance on the levy is a little bit less. Highway Department, again, with other funding sources, uses ten percent and debt service at five percent of the levy. When we compare that levy to what we levied last year, our general revenue had an increase of seventeen percent. Health and Human Services with some of the the processes and policies that the board has put into place has been able to go down seven and a half percent. Highway with a small increase, debt service with a small increase, leaves us with an overall increase of six point eight seven percent over last year's levy, which is below, I believe, inflation rate is seven, some seven percent right now, so we're below the inflation rate. That is the summary of the numbers that came out of all of our budget hearings and meetings. If you have any questions, I can answer questions, or I will step aside and we can allow for comment.
Are there any questions for Jody? All right. Hearing none, seeing none. I will open it up for public comment. And I want to remind folks.
We have one coming to the podium.
Okay, I want to remind you that public comments are limited to five minutes. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Claire Fetter. I live at twenty-six ten Woodland Hill Drive Southeast, Bemidji. My question is, why don't you sell some of the tax forfeit land? You're not paying, the county is not paying taxes on it. They have a hundred and forty-seven thousand acres. And just judging from what we paid this year, the county is foregoing one point seven million dollars per year in taxes. And if the land was sold, it could be sold for a hundred and seventy-five million. So the county is making a decision or has a choice. Why, why don't they sell more tax forfeit land? If the county needs money, if they they could return the land to the tax status, and they could reduce the burden on property owners. So basically, why don't you sell county or tax forfeit land? Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, can you remind me if this is an opportunity to exchange discussion with folks, or is this? We're here to listen to the comments.
Mr. Chair, the board is free to enter into discussions with citizens if they'd like.
Okay, thank you. Are there any others? I'm sorry, I can't see, so I'm not too sure.
I'll let you know.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see anyone else coming to the podium right now.
Okay.
Last call to the podium. Hey, Tim, I don't see anything else.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
In response, in response to Claire Fetzer, what I would ask is, I would ask Claire to contact Tom Berry, county administrator, and he will direct you to the proper department head to get you some answers on that, Claire. He can get you tuned into DNR. We've had discussions about tax forfeit. Jody Treat may have some input on that, but Claire, if you would contact Tom Berry, county administrator, and get to him, and Tom then will direct you to the right department.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukic. Is there any other questions, comments, discussion amongst the board?
Looks like everybody's smiling in the audience, Tim. Everybody's just happy and and they're all cheerful and they're they're happy that our budget is gonna go forward and.
That they picked the perfect time to to come to the board, to the meeting when Commissioner Olson and myself aren't there, so. Sounds great. Hearing and seeing no other discussion amongst the board, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Lukic. Is there a second?
Second by Anderson.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Goswick.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lukic.
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner, yes. Public hearing is closed on a unanimous vote. So with that, we will entertain a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three Beltrami County budget.
Anderson, so moved.
Reed Olson will second.
The motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Olson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lukic.
No.
Commissioner Goswick.
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner. Yes. Beltrami County budget has passed on a four-one vote. So we will continue on to the twenty-twenty-three fee schedule.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Because you're, because the motion, which was just approved, only included the budget resolution.
Yes.
We'll also need action on the twenty-twenty-three property tax levy resolution before we can move on to the proposed fee schedule.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I will so move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Olson. Is there a second?
So moved, Anderson.
Second by Anderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lukic.
No.
Commissioner Goswick.
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner, yes. Motion carried, four one. Okay, so we will continue on to the twenty-twenty-three fee schedule. Tom?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As we do each year, we have an opportunity to look at the county's fee schedule. And we have provided that for you in your packet with some slight modifications to the fee schedule. We have been taking a closer look at the fee schedule and attempting to keep pace with additional rising costs associated with producing the services, many of which are captured in fee-based service collections. And so there are some modifications, as I mentioned, that are identified in strikeout form in the packet. And with those modifications, we would recommend the board favorably consider the update to the proposed fee schedule for twenty-twenty-three.
All right, and we have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the fee schedule.
A motion by Commissioner Goswick is our second.
Second by Anderson.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to comment, a lot of the fee schedule adjustments are in the solid waste department with Commissioner Anderson. I sit on that committee, and a lot of those are increased costs that are are driving our our increase in our our fees because our costs are going up by the places that we have to bring or distribute the refuse or the recyclables or whatever it is to. So it's just a simple matter of passing through those additional costs. Thank you.
I thank you, Commissioner Goswick. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Goswick.
Yes.
Commissioner Lukic.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner, yes. Motion carried, five zero. We'll continue on to the county five-year transportation plan. Is Bruce in attendance, or is?
He's coming to the podium.
Okay, thank you.
I am here. The five-year plan, the draft was proposed, shared with the board back in August. In October, the commissioners took a road tour. And the five-year plan, again, just to kind of go over that that I would have here would be similar. I do have two changes I would like to make to that proposed five-year plan. That is a couple of projects that were planned for next year or were put in twenty-three that we're not gonna be able to do. There's two bridge projects that we are on a waiting list for funding. So they are sitting there waiting on the list, and so without the funding, we cannot do those. And then the third is another, that one is the pedestrian bridge out on the scenic highway. Same thing, we are waiting for that project to be authorized to go forward. And so all three of those projects are not gonna happen that quick. And so I would have those moved to the following year in twenty-four. But again, just to kind of go over the proposed five-year plan that was provided as part of the packet, there was no new projects in there except for for small safety projects. The fifth year, there was no new projects, road projects in that year. We do have a highway mechanic shop being proposed in that fifth year. And the big reason being is there were some project changes, costs. And the biggest one out there is the project out on twenty-two from between fifteen and seventy-one. That is a roughly seven-mile, you know, seven, eight million dollar project. And that is out there in year four, and we need to have some need to use some dollars in that fifth year to help pay for that project. Or when we get closer, potentially, we might split that project in two and do a little bit in each year. But anyways, there's just reduced funding in there for that fifth year. So at this point, I guess there was no new road projects put in the fifth year of the five-year plan. I guess that's all I have for a summary for the road project or for the five-year plan.
Mr. Chair, I would move the five-year plan. As long as there are no six-foot buffer, no passing five-mile projects anywhere in it, I would make that motion.
I'd second that motion.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Lukic, second by Commissioner Anderson. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. Commissioner Lukic.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Goswick.
Yes.
Mr. Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner, yes. Motion carried, five zero. So I believe that brings us to the end of the meeting. My.
I'll move, we adjourn, Mr. Chair, if we need to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Olson, second by Commissioner Lukic to adjourn any further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lukic.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Goswick.
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner, yes. Motion carried. Thank you, guys, and have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.